All right. Good evening, everyone. It's time to call our regularly scheduled June 4th meeting order. Hopefully, everyone has had a chance to take a look at the agenda. Crystal did distribute these earlier in the week and they have been posted out on website. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
A move?
There's a second.
Right.
It's been moved by Chris, seconded by Renee. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. Although the favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That will bring us to the minutes. We did have the main minutes distributed earlier in the week. I'm hoping the folks had the time to take a look at those. I entertain a motion to approve the May minutes. I'm moving that we approve the May minutes. It's been moved by Jim, supported by Dara, that we will approve the May meeting minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. All right. Um, I think we will revisit the treasury report here shortly. We are expecting Kathy. So we have a little bit of time to get in with the traffic and all. And I'll turn it over to Stacy for our friends of the library report.
Thank you, Erin. So thank you all for who were able to attend the Friends Gala. It went fairly well. We had approximately the same number of people as we did last year and we had a great band and we had a great volunteers helping out in the form of Chris Doby, who did an excellent job of attracting traffic and wrestling up the troops. So I that's this is our that was our last official meeting for the year and we won't start up again, I guess year. This whole year, we won't start up again until September and I'm hoping to have interviews completed so that we have a full board for this upcoming year. I've talked to a number of people who are really excited about being a part of it. And to that end, I'm reading a book called Boards That Love Fundraising, because I would like to increase our fundraising goal. Because I think that we have a willing audience for it and who want to do whatever it takes. Activities this summer include a July book sale. It's the weekend of the 11th through the 13th. It's a Thursday through Saturday. We're not going to do a Sunday one this year. We're not doing a bag sale. It's going to be, I'm going to try something different. We're going to competitively price some of the older books that we get that have a lot of value online. I'm hoping to get a lot of resellers in. I might have told you this. I'm sorry I missed the main meeting. I had to go to Rome. It was it was really crowded and I don't think I would go to a high tourist area in even approaching the high season. I can just, you know, low season's so good. When we when we get items that have a lot of like value for a certain population online, I find that it attracts a lot of people and there were a lot of several people, I can't even remember, but it was like enough on two hands. Who came up and said, you know, this book stock weekend and it's a little bit like a miracle on 34th Street's principle. You can't get it at Macy's, go to Gimbels. It reflects really well on Macy's. So we had a number of people bounce back and forth like that. So there really is, you know, there is a group of people who who are interested in what we have to sell. And so I'm hoping that having interesting book sales will expand the membership base to include the folks who want to pay a few dollars and to make a little bit more from their reselling online. I have not talked with the committee yet about having the Friends set up a table at the farmer's market. I'm hoping to do that like a little later in the summer because I think we're in advance of some things right now. So maybe looking at September, October, I think. And
me at this point have every vendor space book.
Yeah. And yeah, I'm wondering about that. I'm gonna have to, who do I contact? Kelly Knight?
Well, well.
Robowski?
Correct. That's not the first name, but it's similar.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll.
Can't say it now that you said that.
I know. I know. But that you had. So that's it. Any questions from anybody?
I had someone come up to me at a school event and just thanked, she knew I was on the library board, she knew I wasn't on the Friends board, but she thanked Meet the Friends through me for making sure that people could sign up and donate online. That's been a life changer for younger, you know, people who don't have checkbooks.
Thank you so much. They don't have checkbooks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And you know, we're realizing slightly, I mean, the percentage pops up. Our key our key demographic tend to be like people my age or older and often they are retired, right? But I do have a lot of younger people swing by in the book sale. Like you guys know, I'm always there. It seems like whenever I get a spare moment. And so I run into a lot of people and and getting a young a younger demographic is really key for us. And Maria has a lot of good ideas, as does Kelly and Jill, about attracting that younger demographic and making them feel a part of the community by doing some things that are going to be library oriented and, you know, sort of literacy oriented, but to give them a space to do something that's relatively inexpensive and also so they don't have to drive like a huge places or far distances to get anything. So that's that's what I'm looking at. I would like to say that I have a goal to increase membership X percentage and to increase donations X percentage, but I can't do that as a single person. It has to be done through, you know, the board and through the board coming to an agreement about that and working on it. So I'm hopeful that next year, you know, once we have gotten through the Millet campaign and our focus a little bit more on how we want to have succession for the board itself and for the Friends that we we work, especially with our library staff, to do some things that are going to be interesting and to help steer a little bit more interest and community based a lot, like the entirety of our population.
Love it. I don't have any questions, but I am witness to the fact that Chris was doing her thing at the gala and she was really bringing the spirit of gala to the building for sure. So I had a great time. The entertainment was good as usual.
Wasn't it great?
Yeah. Yeah. So thank you for doing that.
That was Don Gear. That was Don Gear. Just so you know, she's on the Friends board and she found this place, this website called Gig Salad that people put their like audition tapes up and we're like, of course we want Motown. And so Denise, the lead singer, was really great and she had been at the Michigan Central. She hadn't just been at the Michigan Central concert the night before. She had been performing in Michigan Central prior to the secret concert that was televised online. So I mean, that was like really, it's always really amazing. Like you have no idea who is connected. And so, you know, talk to everybody, right? Absolutely. And she was she was so lovely, as was her backing band.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I think that will take us to our treasurer.
I got stuck in track. Good to be free, come off, you know. So. Anyways. I'm moving the board approves the May twenty four, two thousand twenty four equity bills. Total in five hundred thirty seven thousand eight hundred seventy seven dollars and ninety four cents.
All right. It's been moved and properly supported that we've approved the expenditures. Totally five hundred thirty seven thousand eight hundred thirty seven dollars and ninety four cents. In the discussion.
I have a simple question.
Yeah.
What is the, you know, the Comerica account? What is bill clearing? Is that a, what is, is that a company that clears the other checks?
That sends it, the invoices to us to approve. Okay. Yeah. So that's a part of plant ring.
Yeah. It's basically like our invoicing platform, you know, it's billed to submit it there and they go through the approval process. And then the money is exchanged there from either the operating accounts or reserve accounts, wherever they might be from to then cut the checks and pay the expenditure. It was really like a holding transfer account.
So the Comerica, going through Comerica, they do that for you and this holding company does the other checks.
No. All bills are paid through bill.com, right?
Unless they're direct paid, like auto 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 bill that automatically comes out of our checking account.
Like a lecture.
So in that case, then yes, Sharon. So you're seeing some that are clearing directly through the account and anything that requires a check is switched and seen in the bill.com. Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a quick question. Kathy, this brand total seems a little higher than average. Did we have any expenses that were above normal or?
Let's see. We did have the Michigan Municipal Lead Library and Fabric Pool, which was sixty nine thousand dollars.
Okay. And that's doesn't, that's just only once a year?
Yes, once a year. And then we did get reimbursed twenty one thousand nine hundred eighty six dollars from MetroNet. Because we we pay out the monies that are owing MetroNet and then they reimburse us. Sometimes that gets to be a lot of money that goes to them. And well, our usual Blue Care Network, that's our employee medical twenty nine thousand and twenty two thousand and vision wear. That's our annual renewal of our vision. So those are the fees. Oh, and then, I'm sorry, Innovative Interface, that's our annual subscription, report subscriptions, eight thousand.
Yeah.
That's our subscriptions.
Kelly, are you aware of any legislative efforts to like limit costs of subscription based products, right? I think about this since over the few years I've been on this board and we have watched that kind of ratchet. I think that's probably in my mind, one of the biggest variable costs that used to be a little bit more fixed. So subscriptions are so popular these days.
And I think that because we're at the end of the year and all of these come due July first or whatever, you're paying the annual payment right now or you don't usually have it for the rest of the year.
It's the cost more. Any other questions? All right. No other questions. Although the favor, let it be known by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Hey, I moved to receive and file the May two thousand twenty four financial reports. Support?
All right. It's a new dance afforded that we filed the May financial reports. Any discussion? And seeing all of the favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Looking carries. That will bring us to the director's report.
So our next food truck event is on Tuesday. It's Tim's Gourmet Sliders. It's from twelve to two here at the twelve mile location. On Wednesday, we had our summer reading kickoff party. It was a, you know, success. They gave away over thirteen hundred snow cones or something.
With Rita's Ices or something? Cola. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so yeah, a very busy day for the Farmington location. We have, so last year at the end of the program, we had a total of thirty six hundred people sign up. And thirteen days into this program, we are at just under three thousand. So I don't know if it was the fall mailer that went out to every household that went out about summer reading or what, but it's 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 a really good turnout so far.
Snow cones.
This is no cone.
Well, I'll 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 interject. I think the mailer, I also noticed what you guys did in the special services bulletin this year by keeping the message very clean and focused and really targeted on that probably helped as well. If I saw that, that's a great, great strategy. It's a good job.
Well, I don't know. I don't know the age breakdowns and I know you guys go into the schools every year, but I know that everywhere I went, I heard people talking about public librarians in the schools. Yeah.
Yeah. They had a good, good reception to getting in this year. We started our MLK Day plan already because, you know, if you're gonna do speakers, you have to do them now. Everybody wants the same speakers and stuff. But so we invited Greg Smith from the Farmington Public Schools and he had some great ideas and we're very excited about some of the opportunities that he came up with or had connections with. And so we'll share more details as we get worked out. We had the opportunity to be featured. We have the opportunity to be in the Chambers Link magazine and that is in consolation. But for not being able to present at the the state of cities, right? So they promised us to have, to allow us a section in their magazine for September. The, so in August, this this location at some point is going to need a closed food day to replace the water valve. On the water meter, they have to shut down the water. And it's probably going to take the whole day. So you, they have to fix it and then they have to call Oakland County to come back and turn it on. Hopefully is timely. So we have potential dates, August fifteenth, twenty second or twenty ninth, but we're not quite sure when we get that scheduled. So just FYI. ML like ability and so the junior octopus videos, I think I mentioned that Sarah Sona and Will and I were judges and I went to the awards ceremony on May twenty ninth to see the winners and art art, it wasn't quite what we had picked and what they did, but you know, there was a variety of judges. So they I think we had North Farhington first, but it's fun. For so the Millet Renewal Committee, the Statement of Organization was sent to Oakland County and it has been officially accepted. So there's actually now an official committee. It's called the UCL twenty twenty four committee. I went to, I was invited to attend the Oakland County Main Event Awards Ceremony for Farmington and that was in Rochester. So that was a fun night. They did win twice. I thought they should have won more. But they did win the Mobility on Main Street for their newest Farmington Road, that newest section and the Spirit of Main Street, which is their video. I don't know if you've ever seen the video. So they won for that one too. Yeah.
Yeah.
It was a good time. I just gave you a little update on our strategic plan accomplishments for this year because we're at the end of this year. There's other ones that we had a goal to complete, which were kind of still in the process of wayfinding signage and that kind of stuff. Seems like things move at snail's pace, snail's pace. So a locker update, the twenty four seven lockers. Everything, the graphic has been sent for them. Mid-July, August is the completion date. We don't have a white date, but that's the date that we're looking at. We will be in the Founder's Parade this year, July twentieth, I want to say. It's the theme eighties. Do you know? Do you remember what Maria said? They were working on the theme. I think it's the eighties because it's Back to the Future or something like that. Yeah, it was gonna be on the theme because it's also the. By Centennial. Anyway, we're in the parade. If anybody wants to walk, we'll give you the information. You might have to dress and be attire. They're still working on.
That's easy. Probably got eighty stuff available.
Still in the closet, right? So. We, well, I received, we have received an invitation to the Sikh foundation that came this year. It's the banquet. This time it's being held in Westland. And it's at the end of September. My husband and I went last year, so. There we go. Anybody could go.
Yeah.
Um.
Nice.
So I have Crystal reading the meeting minutes from the city of Farmington and Farmington Hills now because I feel like what this is, as they go on. So this last June tenth one, they did talk about the restructuring of MCMR. And so this is from the city manager who has drafted what he as a recommendation to the city council about the mission, vision and objections of a committee that would be established. And this committee named to be determined would have eleven members that would be appointed by the mayor. So it's a little bit different than what's currently happening. So I don't think they discussed or voted on anything yet. I think it's just still up for discussion. So I think though the way that it's structured now, it doesn't necessarily mean the library is a participant in that because it's more citizen based. So multicultural, multi-racial community comes.
That's a joint activity with the city of Farmington.
Well, so that's the thing. There's a little note in here that says this, so other considerations to the city of Farmington and the Farmington Public School District, because those were both of three, then the city were a part of MCMR. Be a party to this committee. I've discussed with Dave Murphy, Farmington City Manager, and he expressed a strong interest by this via Farmington to the city. So the question is then, if so, how should the appointments be broken down between? So I mean, a lot of things are still a little discussion, but that's kind of where we're at right now. We are going to start offering July first and we have got so many requests for coding, like the ability for, you know, kids to do coding, whatever. And so there's this, it's called hero code and they can walk through it. Gamify type of coding where they can do it. They can take participate in like tournaments, like who and get awards for who does the best coding or who creates the best whatever. So we're hoping to start that on July first. And if it was, if Tanner wore PLM libraries joy and then you get a twenty five percent discount off the price. So.
We have ten. How many libraries have signed up?
Well, the last time I heard, we're getting close is what she said. So, yeah.
So it's the same that the younger patrons or?
Uh, it's, well, it can be adults too. So it's whoever wants to learn coding and it's just more gamified. So depending on what you're, what kind of code you want to learn.
And your style of learning.
Right. Yeah. So, yeah.
How often are we planning to have a program?
So I think in the beginning, so it's very independent technically, but like you can just, you create a cap through the library. It gives you access for free and you can do it at home or whatever, but to kick it off, you know, we need to publicize. So I feel like there should be programming for that and that's the expectation. And then maybe quarterly or whatever. Yeah, we, I've talked with Jenny about a goal for the teen department this new year of having regular programming involving the new software or program that being a goal for her department. So I think that's something that they're going to implement, hopefully at least quarterly. We also have, we have, I don't know if you ever heard of Ryan Doe. Have you ever heard of Brian Doe? He's filmless training type of thing. And we have his training for staff because he talks about dealing with diversity or I rate patrons or, you know, how to distance yourself from those kinds of interactions and that kind of stuff. So we have that training. The Idea Committee Task Force this year suggested training for dealing with neurodiverse patrons or staff that we, you know, that we have on. And so we and so we also have purchased that training start July first to give more resources for the staff to. Yeah. In your comment or in your packet is eleven pages of, or they might be double sided now, positive comments. So I decided I was just, I don't know, I get, I get, you know, because my position gets all everything and sometimes it's very weird. And so I decided I need to hear positives. So I required every staff member to give it at least one positive comment. One positive comment to their supervisor. I compiled them all because I feel like, you know, we all get stuck in our own mindset where everything seems bad. And then you read the positive comments and it's a great place to work, whether it's the staff, the benefits, the community, you know, whatever. And so when you're in that mindset, this is a way for you to go, oh, maybe I'm just stuck in a rut and it's not them. So I shared it with all staff and and I'm sharing.
Thank you. So these are, this is different from the comments that Crystal posted.
These are staff.
These are staff.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I'll play most of the patron comments for father. Would be exceptional. One, and really the only ask there was for more of us, honestly, the person who has priced more hourly.
It's, he's the one that even spoke to us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes. Every, yeah.
So.
Every holiday that we hold.
Yeah.
Um, I will be gone July third through July fourteenth. So I will miss the next meeting. I will be in staff.
We'll try not to bother you. I don't want to bother Jill.
And I wanted to, this one thing, you know, well, this came through ERAP, which is people can email us questions or whatever. So this came yesterday, I think. And it says, good morning and greetings from Puntacana, majestic elegance resource. I'm here enjoying reading a book that once belonged to your library. I thought it might be interesting to know. It came to me for a roundabout wait. You sold it and it was bought by a secondhand dealer who then sold it to another dealer called Abe Books. Who then sold it to Better World Books, which raises funds and donates books for literate literacy, I think they might say. And so now I sit here reading A Line Among Men by Gregory Maguire. Thank you and I hope you have a wonderful.
Very cool.
So it's fair and responsive. And she's like, thank you for contacting FCL. Also, thank you for sharing the story of how one of our library books made its way to you. I love that and I'm glad to hear that you and the book are having a wonderful time in Puntacana. This is the best virtual postcard to receive.
He might need to sell that. He tells it stories with Sarah.
You want, yeah.
That's awesome. Yeah.
It's like a message in a bottle. Social media.
So we don't do Better World Books anymore?
We absolutely do Better World Books, but we make less money if we give it to Better World Books. But that's where all the books that I absolutely cannot sell in the book sale go for various reasons.
Like went around because it got into.
And how would he know? I don't know. Maybe trace it.
Yeah, it probably still had FCL library marketing.
Right.
That's in our book system. Yeah. And I don't know how he knew it jumped from Abe to Better World. Yeah. But yeah. Everybody putting their stamps on there. Yeah. But it's interesting that one book was sold. I think I counted four times.
Yeah. Maybe it's just a fictional story and they're good writers.
Anyway, I thought that was silly. That's it was for me. Do you have any questions?
If I have any questions, thank you very much. That will take us to unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is outdoor signage. Sarah was gracious enough to arrange an onsite demonstration for us at last board meeting. And everybody got to see the visual signage. I even got to test it with my new progressive lenses. It passed. So Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
So I think there were two things that that we were supposed to go back and research. One was if you can see the sign coming down. Of where we're going. North? No. East and west. East. Okay. Coming down east off of twelve mile. And it was the, the sign and the telephone pole getting in the way of seeing it. I drive that way every day. My opinion is no, because I can see it from Jan, the beginning of the Jam Pro parking lot, the first one that you come to. And you can see it and the, you can see the one we currently have and the other one would be bigger and brighter. So it shouldn't be about. So in my opinion, no, I don't know if anybody else tested that. I I tested it like when I come back from FA and I take Farmington Road. I do think though that we would need to redo some of the landscaping out front because I think the way that the bushes fear in front of it, if we got rid of the bushes, it would make it even more visible. But I think as it stands right now, it's, it wouldn't be difficult to see because it would, you know, it is like you said, brighter and raised higher.
Still think it would be better moved over where there's nothing. Still think it would be better moved over where there's nothing around it, gets more in the more to the east. So that you it's more visible. I mean, it's not under the tree and it's got some camp bushes which you can take out, but still.
Well, I think the issue with moving it is that we get into um having to relocate our electric service.
I think would run through a conduit. I don't know that it's a big deal.
I I so I don't see a need to move it. I just, I think it's I think if you move it, then you're moving it far away. If somebody was coming to see joining.
Well, I think part of the, when you think about the property as a whole, right? I mean, you've got the you where you want to center. You want to center on the building? Are we looking to center on the property campus? And I think that's why it's in its current location. Because the entire campus encompasses the parking lot. And so I think they were looking to send the sign on the the library campus.
Well, my suggestion is is that we have, I don't know, Sarah, wherever, draw a sketch of the sign that that we want. This, you know, do we want it more rectangular to fit with the building to draw a sketch of the sign? Is it then what size is it going to be? Four foot by six or whatever? And put it on a landscape like an architect would, a a suggestion, six feet from here, eight feet. And look, actually look at you know, the design of the sign could be very different, but unless we can see it on a piece of paper and go and go out and say, is it going to be a rectangular sign? Is it going to be more of a square sign? And then um picking the pixels and the brightness is a small item uh in terms of where you're going to put it and what it looks like. But without a sketch, there's so many different kinds of designs.
But the sketch was already there.
I do not see the sketch saying so that with the landscape.
Yeah, I I.
Do we have like a landscape of the front of building?
In the uh landscape of the property, right? So like
So you show the driveway and you show this is where it would be. And then people can hold the drawing up and then they'll look and say, oh, uh like for an example, a a square sign looks a lot different than one that's more horizontal.
I don't know that. You were talking about a square sign.
No, that's what I mean. The sketch is already, it's already sketched out. So you can take that sketch that was already
Have we seen a sketch?
Yeah, I think the sketch of the sign in the context of the landscape, which Sharon's calling out.
Right.
I mean, is the size already predetermined?
Yes, yeah, based on city regulation for the most part. Here's my thought on this. Um I don't know that this is a pressing matter per se. Um we have been talking about the fact that um we probably need to reinstitute the building committee, facilities committee in some way, shape or form to help facilitate the rest of the master plan uh activity. And so I think this would be a perfect topic for that committee to really go and kind of dig in. Because that conversation around the building committee kind of coming back came when we had memorial benches, you know, wanting to families wanted to do that. It's like, well, what do we want our benches to look like? That question came up. And so I think this is this kind of goes along with that conversation. So maybe if we can defer this to the to be formed building committee to give a recommendation and maybe work more closely with Sarah and the vendor as well to understand what's possible. Um and then give a recommendation back to the board if if you're okay with that. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yes, ma'am.
I do want to comment that I think the sign we have now is not um I think if it's the same size in the same place, the idea that it's brighter might help. When I moved to this community, I drove past this library four times before I could find it. And now I know where it is. I don't even look for the sign. I look for the driveway. It's a sign that's useless to me. I think a new sign is good. Yeah, yeah. So I'm not sure if it's about the where it is, Kelly, or just the kind of sign it is. But I do think the brightness of it will help a lot.
Fortunately, I think now I'm going to come back to what I said. If you center it on the building, then when you're coming down the street, you can see it. It is in your face either way. If you're centering it where it is now, you're just kind of not you're not really But it'd be nice and bright, but you have more of a stretch if it's in the line.
I was just about to say what Chris brought up. For me, it's a good signal of where to turn in.
I was gonna say, because neither me is the building next door is my signal because I can't see that. Because I would be afraid, especially with a lot of um our older patrons that and especially after it's been there for so long. And if we moved it, we may end up with a lot of cars down in that. Yeah, you know, I don't want that to happen.
But Kathy, but you think it's reasonable though, maybe to have um our to be considered uh to be formed building committee take this up? That way we can give it some serious consideration. Yeah, I think the items that Sharon brought up are really salient. So you're okay with that. I think that's how we'll. Thank you. And on next meeting's agenda, you will see that committee be informed. So all the folks who want to be on that committee, let us know. You let us know right now. You're like, oh, okay, yeah, got it. Anybody else? Thank you.
Sharon's.
All right. Now we'll bring this to uh our next uh item, which is the millage uh during finished business. So um as you heard in the director's report, um the meeting is official. Actually informed, which is great. Thank you, Kelly. Thanks to Sarah. Thanks um to Maria uh for volunteering, Gregor uh of course, thanks to uh the president of the friends who are here with us for agreeing to do this. Tonight, we have a few things um except we have our actual resolution.
Who's chairing the committee? Of the village committee.
Yes, would you like to do it instead?
Trustees are allowed to be the chair.
Well, we did check uh with our legal counsel on that and it was no issue as long as I don't come in here and start um ordering staff to do things related to the committee's activities and I won't do that. So um yeah, so we got our 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 resolution committing our military proposal. And as a part of that, we have the fifth A within our actual ballot language um that we present to the voters. Um and so that's crafted by our attorney. So Kelly, put it on this.
Oh, that's it. So so this has to be, just let give you a timetable. It has to be. So this was all drafted by the attorney. I did not write any of it. And it's and it's written in such a way that makes it legal and covers the information that needs to be given to the public. This needs to be to the Oakland County City Court by August thirteenth five, four P M, I believe. But the reason we're doing it now is because I'm gone in July and I didn't want to wait. And then I didn't want to wait until our August meeting, which only gives us a few days or two. So I mean, it's in order to approve the language, you have to do the resolution.
It's when you say do the resolution.
We have to fill, yeah.
Yeah.
And and then accept the resolution because I think somewhere on there is if you read, I don't somewhere it states like you all agree or you have to vote.
Yeah, so I would suggest really that we have a oh, we need one. We're gonna need one.
So you must follow our names, just put some exceptions up.
Right, right. So I think um I did obtain a motion um to uh prove the resolution submitting the millage proposal as presented.
I saw move to do that.
All right, and moved and properly supported that we would move the resolution submitting millage proposal. Any discussion?
Does exhibit A need a yes or no?
No, that's that's what the the you're going to say yes or no when you vote, but yeah, but that's how it's going to be set up on the ballot. So they have the yes or no there for the people to vote and choose as for not to.
It's kind of a part of the resolution.
In the middle of it works, says the essence of the revenue logistics library book helps collect in the first year of bloody twenty twenty five. If the millage is approved and led by the district library column is approximately. Does that make sense or do we need it?
Sorry, Kelly, what am I? I I understand what they're saying. Um this language has been crafted by the attorney um based on current standard and knowledge of previous, you know, ballot issues. I wouldn't personally veer from this. I do know that the statute allows the board president or to modify if necessary, if the clerk were to require some kind of modification, but I would take it as.
Oh, you said this got uh accepted already.
Or just our committee formation has been. I'll go with that. I'm just trying to figure out where you're top, which line was that? Oh, I see. Hold on, I didn't. The district library will collect in the first year. No, there's, I wouldn't put it count. I agree. It's a complicated sentence, but I don't think it kind of will.
This is legal use. Question, how about the question mark here?
Do you know, is this close to the language? I think the only difference is that we have to say that that our our rev- the revenue is yeah, can be captured by the D D A or the grand room reporter.
So um Sharon was bringing up where the question mark is. I understand that. So I don't know if we can ask, since this is one big block, the actual the vote, that what you're voting on is the first half of the language and then the rest of this explanation. And I don't know if that can be broke. I don't know if on the ballot, that can be broken away at all.
Broken, no, it ha- it has to be one paragraph.
It does have to be one paragraph. Okay. And and that's why some of this is related to, I think, the ballot standards.
So there's no way in this that we can tell a person how much money per thousand dollars for their house.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, oh yeah, that has to be in that. That was like
So it's just under a dollar.
All right, any other discussion?
I remember in the videos that the language has to be very specific.
That's why I sent it to the attorney.
Very specific.
So the motion, I just want to make sure the motion is actually to adopt the resolution submitting the military.
To adopt the language in.
No, no. That's that's why I said on the second page, your resolution declared adopted. That's what I asked for the resolution. I mean, it's an approving, but we'll say adopting the uh of our motion, adopting the res- submitting village proposal. Um and then that was second. Exhibit A is a part of the resolution. All right, so is there any other discussion?
I do. Access treasurer of the board comes to you. So where am I getting that information?
For the cost of the election, in the resolution, it states that the treasurer and the clerk's office will provide our breakdown of what our cost is because we're not the only thing on that ballot.
Right.
So they will assess kind of everybody's share and then let us know how much our share of that ballot costs.
Okay.
But it doesn't make it sound like we might pay it all.
The way I read this, because I want to do it properly is the secretary needs to record the date and time was present, who's absent. And then the following preamble in resolution. So it's this entire document. Just so that we're clear, everybody here is clear.
Right.
We're voting on this entire document.
Right. And that's where you fill in Sharon's name.
I yeah, I understand. I just thought to make sure people know, including myself.
Right.
And then it stated for the minutes.
Read this document. Do you want to?
No, I don't think it needs to be read into the minutes, but I think it needs to be stated for the minutes, minutes, that we understand that what we're voting on is these the entire document.
Right. And to your point then, Chris, that's where under number two, that's where it says must contain the ballot language of the proposal attached to as exhibit A. So that's why this is by adopting this resolution, this is already
Yes.
Automatically, yeah.
Yeah. I just thought it had been misstated earlier, but I wasn't listening attentively.
If you think that will get you out of being secretary, you're mistaken.
Because this is really directing you.
That's right, right. That's right. So I agree. I I needed to know too, but that's where, yeah, that I think, yeah, you're right. Everything you said is correct. And that's why we do need a roll call vote on this. Any other discussion? Any other question?
So you'd have to work with the county court of preparing ballots. How much job do you have to do?
I retired just in time.
Well, I knew this was coming. You know, for the discussion, uh Jim would be with the call roll. Uh, okay, wow, I've done this. Uh, okay, um, I don't even know what order to go.
I don't think.
Okay, um. Write this down here. I will start with Ernie. Um and our officer Kathy. Myself, I. Sharon. Renee. Okay. And so the motion passes seven to none. All right. Well, yeah, I would, yes, there are no names. Yes, because we went around. So, yeah. So declared adopted. Um I don't know if those finishing. Okay, anyway, I have the date. Yes, so I have the data inside in some places. So I would call that about six fifty four. Yeah, oh, thank you for that. Very much. And maybe Crystal, where you can So I'm sorry, the there are time and vote because the the first time that they go, the top of the page, that would just be the six o'clock. Right, okay. There's no time. Sharon and 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 Kathy second, yeah.
There's a couple more things about to know um for the D D A capture and the grand reporter. I think I said that in the email I sent you guys, but the attorney is drafting agreements that the city you have to actually enter into. I don't think we've ever done that before. You actually have to enter into agreement with the city. And they have to sign and we have to sign. So she's drafting those agreements for us and we'll have to take it to the city department.
That's kind of what I expected. I'm wondering maybe if they did one initially, that we have an initial agreement somewhere.
There must have been some agreement somewhere if money was moving.
Yeah.
Well, I think so halfway through, I don't know. I don't know if you were here. Do you remember when that they changed the rules? That said, you can add that, you could opt out of it, that's kept like through the center of the mill.
Oh, got it.
And so I think now that we're getting into the new one, we have to pay up the agreement.
All right, that will take or anything else on the millage.
Don't think so.
I I think the committee has a date for our next meeting, which is the twenty four.
Yeah.
Um and so the committee. Um and so the committee will be meeting on that date and uh somewhere, I think, downtown Farmington, oh, June, twenty four of June. Yes. All right, uh that will take us to subcommittee updates. Uh finance committee, any update from the finance committee?
We received a whopping recent credit balance account from fidelity. Got a reset. I was six ten twenty four and um. I was, uh that was deposited then by at play into our general fund.
And she literally have to go to.
And I will wire that to Michigan class. So it doesn't cost money. Uh we earned twenty one thousand twenty four dollars and ninety seven cents. Interest in May for Michigan class total earned year to date forty one thousand one hundred forty one thousand fifty dollars. So my question to you is, are you interested in me giving you these figures every month, or you just wanna? Cause I think that they are on the back of one of, they are.
Investment report, I think it's solid legend. Um, I I I like hearing that.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great to just conclude it in the financial reports.
Yeah, or monthly or at least quarterly, whatever.
Yeah, I said I don't have to, yeah. And that's all I have to say about that.
What I think, Kathy, I would like from you to do, Kelly, to check in on is um maybe a minimum fund balance for the Comerica account. Based on the fact that the interest of the uh classes, what double that, so that we can get um. The most earnings on the most roughly as possible, and I'm sure Plant Moran will be able to give you that number. Uh but maybe if you can explore that.
They're actually working on that. They're trying to see like, like, how much do you really need in there per month, like based on. The bills and.
Okay.
So they're waiting, they're surveying that and we'll make a recommendation.
Great.
All right, that will take us to personnel committee. I do not believe there is an update for the personnel committee, personnel members, no? All right, thank you. That will bring us to new business. Um the first item of new business we have is the budget amendment. And I know that um this has been shared previously and we have um. Pretty good issue now, keeping up the budget updates as we go through the year, uh thanks to the support of the staff and family. So I don't know, Kelly or Kathy, do you have any comments on this, Kathy? I'll I'll turn to you for any commentary. No comments, um.
Well, we did have that, we, we did have to do a little change in money that we got in interest. Luckily, I caught that. They thought, so they had to change our amended budget. You can see in the um one, two, three, four column that we've used up most of, I mean, everything is pretty much public static. Some, like in the local community's development stabilization, we're, we hit that almost on. The grant revenue. We we needed more money, so.
No, this is revenue. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We got more money. There you are. So um, yeah. So in the two hundred fifteen thousand, I went to the A M H. Now, why was that in there again? So that they they, remember they left it in there to to case we needed it for that. But because we've gotten more, we've increased our revenue this year based on these other things, they didn't need to keep it in there. So they're putting it back into capital. So the. Go down through that, the three hundred, like, for the salary from wages. No, we're taking out where you had a thousand, yeah, because we didn't need as much as we planned in the, yeah, most things are. Think we need to put in like sort of retirement by twenty one thousand five ninety five. So that that goes over to the next stage two. Let's see, I'm in transfer out after five hundred two thousand five hundred fifty five. One more. One more. One nine, seven twenty one. Go from your five oh seven to the last. That five oh two five 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 is what um is what all these things add up to. So we have that much money that wasn't used, it was budgeted initially, and so that's gonna get centered out into the. Capital fund.
Thank you, Kathy. Um and I appreciate also the diligence of the staff to provide the commentary on that as well, who brought the commentary here. Um for all the adjustments. Um with that being said, I entertain a motion to approve. Um this budget amendment for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, uh sorry, I.
No.
Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
I'm sorry, could I interrupt? Kathy, could I? Okay, could I just wanna make sure I write for the minute. So we're, I understand we're we're approving the amended.
Yeah.
Budget. I guess that's all I need to say. Um, but I didn't understand what you had given to me in adding, adding fifty three thousand. Two revenues and extended will change. Okay, I get it. I get the big picture. Okay, okay, sorry, go ahead.
And Jim, I did obtain a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented.
Are you making, are you making, during or to make the motion? Yeah.
I didn't obtain a motion, right? Is that what I said? Okay, I don't know. All right, and so I think.
Yeah, well, wait, she didn't make the motion yet. Ernie's entertaining a motion. Right, there you go.
Okay, so I propose to amend the two thousand twenty four fiscal year budget as presented.
All right, so moved by Kathy and accepted by Delara. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? That takes us to the approval of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget, which um in fourth, I'll be hearing. Um and the presentation from Plant Moran. Any commentary on this one? Well, Kathy, from you.
Since such a nice sheet, because it shows what the actual budgets were.
Sounds really funny. This is such a nice sheet.
But anyways, I'm pretty straight forward.
Is there a motion?
To approve and adopt the twenty four, twenty five budget in the amount of eight ninety three hundred sixty one thousand.
Court, I'll second.
Okay, moved by Kathy, um supported by Chris. Uh, any discussion? What do you like? What, who wants to win that second? Okay, Chris is so gracious, she gave up. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. That will bring us to the last item under the justice, which is elections. Uh so we have our handy dandy uh election card here. Um. For those of you who, I guess, maybe have not done this before, and you are, this might be your first election with us, so welcome. Uh Sharon, this might be your first election with this item. Yeah, okay, just like, yeah, all right, um. Jim, do you wanna give us a rundown on how we're gonna do this?
Well, okay, so um, so the the ballots are, if we have, first off, anyone can nominate. And nominations do not need to be seconded, and if the, as long as the candidate accepts a nomination, uh then they're running. Um but if we only have one nomination for a position, then obviously we don't uh need to uh vote. And we do do it one office at a time, starting with president, in case. Uh in case there is a runoff and somebody wants to run for another office.
So we should write.
Yes.
Do you accept that nomination?
Uh, I will accept a nomination. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll consider uh the presidency bill. Thank you for your role of confidence. Yeah, to vice president. Laura, can you accept the nomination? She does. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Seeing none, we'll consider the position of Phil. Congratulations. But I can guarantee you Bob, huh, there's probably some there.
Thank you. Um, we should throw out that um vice president is automatically the chair of the. So if that changes your mind enough.
All right, that will bring us to treasurer.
And once again, the treasurer is the automatic chair of the finance.
All right, well, they all nominated her. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we'll consider that role filled. Congratulations, Kathy.
And thank you.
We're bringing a lot more interest income due to to some of your work, so thank you. And that will finally bring us to secretary.
I nominate Jim.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it. All right, I'll accept. I don't mind if there's an election on this, on this position. Okay, with that being known, are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, we will consider the secretary bill. All right, that closes our elections. Thank you so much.
I do have a question kind of related to that, is um I think Bob's term is up at the end of June. Is he reappointed or running to be reappointed?
He has not been officially reappointed. Um so we are expecting with him and with the city of Farmington to wait for their official appointment.
The reason is without a reappointment, and you know, he can't vote.
Well, right, i- i- if he's not reappointed, he's not a member of the board, that's correct, and there's an opening. Um, so in, well, you're city of Farmington. Your Farmington, okay. So Farmington does it differently, and and they they uh before they reappoint any board member. They like to have an interview in, at a public meeting with their uh press. So so I assume they're gonna. Try to schedule that with Bob. Um and as Ernie was talking about before the meeting started, yeah, they haven't scheduled that yet, so.
And I think the first thing that might have to happen is that uh Bob may need to confirm with them his desire to to stay in here. So we will make sure to follow up with him and with the city. You know, Jim can attest and myself also, I came on this coming out of that period, not having had a full board. It certainly have been nice to have had it for the last couple of years, so. All right, any other questions on the topic of elections?
One year terms, everybody.
Um, that will bring us to correspondence. Do we have any additional correspondence?
Uh, none, none received by the secretary.
Any public comment?
Well, they're going to comment or no, they have to be physically.
They do not, unfortunately.
I didn't think so, but I just want to double check.
I I have a a comment, if you don't mind. I forgot to say this. Um I'm going to the American Library Association um annual meeting at the end of June. So if there's anything you are interested in, let me know. The A L A. Uh schedule is accessible from A L A dot org and you go to conventions and then it pops up and there's. But I'm happy to swing by because I plan on spending my days in the San Diego Convention Center, so. Let me know. This is where I brought back the stuff for Bob last year about um the bookmobiles, right, right, so.
Which has sent us on another journey, so. All right, any trustee comment? Seeing none, I think that brings us to the close of today's meeting, that we can consider ourselves adjourned. Thank you.